Good evening, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order. The first thing we're going to do is have our invocation by Councilmember Alshire, and then the pledge to the flag.
As we gather here this evening, may we be ever mindful of the opportunities to render ourselves to the service of fellow citizens and to the community, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which we build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make this a better place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Some general announcements. Obviously, we're operating under the rules and procedure adopted on December 18th, 2012. Use of cellphones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedule coming up next Tuesday, we're going to be taking a walkabout in downtown to look at some of the successes and opportunities. Tuesday, the 6th, we will have no work session, and we would hope everybody would join us for National Night Out at Fairgrounds Park. And then the 13th and 20th will be work sessions at 4:00, and the 27th of August we'll have our regular session at 7:00 p.m. This evening, we have some appointments to various boards and commissions. For the Hagerstown Housing Authority, I'll be nominating or appointing Richard McCleary to serve a term to expire August 31st, 2018. This is an appointment that does not require council approval. The other appointments that I am recommending to the council are for the City Ethics Commission, Kathleen O'Connell, term to expire on September 1st, 2018; for the Hagerstown Redevelopment Authority, which we are considering to be renamed the Hagerstown Loan Review Authority, Leroy Burntner, Randy Catlett, and Brian Selders, all with terms expiring on August 1st, 2016; and for the Historic District Commission, Christina Davis, the term to expire July 23rd, 2017.
So moved.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second on the appointments. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the appointments as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next part of our agenda is citizen comments, and I have a list here of some folks here to speak just for the regular citizen comments. I'd remind folks that citizen comments are limited to five minutes per individual. Our meetings are televised and recorded, also available on YouTube, and your comments will be on air and on tape. The first name that I have here is Debra Reader, I believe it is. Ms. Reader, are you here? And if you don't mind coming up to the microphone and state your address for the record, please.
My name is Debra Reader, and I live at 11 West Baltimore Street, the Potomac Towers. I am here because-
Excuse me, Debra. Could you move a little closer to the microphone?
Pardon me?
Microphone. That way we can hear you.
I am here because it's for that understanding that you want to put the ballpark there across from the towers and the C.L. Brooks Building. If you would understand that there's a lot of elderly people and handicapped people that live in these buildings, that you would not want to do this. These people, some of them go to bed early, and they, we don't want to hear all that noise at night when we're trying to sleep, because, you know, even myself, with my breathing and everything, if the ambulance is called there, the fire truck or anything, they're going to have it in a possible time of getting in and out of that parking lot. It's bad enough sometimes they do now, but I hope you take it under consideration that we are seniors and there are handicapped in that building and surround there, and we do not, please do not need this around our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reader. Next on the list is Joseph Marshner. Mr. Marshner?
Joseph Marshner, 522 Summit Avenue, Hagerstown. Come before you this evening as both a citizen and also the president of Hagerstown Neighborhood Development Authority. And I've come to make comment on a piece of new business that's on your agenda for this evening for next month's council meeting, and that is amending Chapter 10, Part 2, Article 13 of the city code regarding the HRA. If my remarks seem a little bit earnest, you'll understand why, I think, if you bear with me. I come before you tonight because, as a taxpayer, a voter, and a citizen, I am concerned about what I feel is a slow erosion of democracy. As a citizen, I participate fully in the local democratic process, not only by voting and paying my taxes, but also by watching carefully the decisions made by those elected to enact and protect laws that are in my best interest and the best interest of the citizens of our city. I'm very concerned about the vote that strips the HRA, a citizen board, of any power and authority beyond loan review. Though this may more accurately reflect what the board has been doing for some time, it is not what the board should be doing per the code. What concerns me is the feeling that it is okay to strip away power legally invested in a citizen board by the code of the city, the law, simply for the sake of efficiency. Democracy is often inefficient and slow because the best representation of the will of the people comes from the input of the people themselves. This means boards and commissions are a necessary part of the proper functioning of good government. The most efficient government is a dictatorship, but I don't think too many of us would really want to trade the inherent inefficiency of a functioning democracy for the efficiencies of an authoritarian government. However, distracted as we are by the culture wars playing out at the state and federal level, too many citizens have stopped paying attention to government at the local level. This has led to an environment where it is all too easy to strip away provisions of local codes that foster a democratic process by saying that those provisions are inefficient and too costly, but in reality are there to ensure democratic process and citizen input. Rather than stripping away those provisions, a strong local governing board should be making sure that such provisions are carried out, that regular meetings are being held, that each board or commission is properly discharging its duty under the law. That would be an elected governing board that protects both my interest and the constituency by protecting the democratic process. The decision you have before you is simple. Either you allow a provision of the code that encourages democracy to remain unchanged, or you move forward to change the code for the sake of efficiency. I caution you, however, changing this provision of the code is an anti-democratic move, a move to remove citizen input from major spending and review decisions governing how taxpayer money is spent, a move that will, in effect, take the public out of the process of deciding where taxpayer-funded CDBG money is used in their own town. Ultimately, it is the wrong decision. The right decision is to leave the code as is, and as mayor and council, make sure that the HRA is aware of all aspects of its mission under the code, and that staff ensures that the HRA board can successfully accomplish that mission. I am hoping you all feel as I do, that the removal of citizen authority and input in any governing process is essentially anti-democratic. The easy, more efficient road is rarely the best, but it is always the most tempting. I implore you to think about the unintended consequences of changing this section of the code, and I hope you will agree with me that leaving the HRA with its legally invested authority is the best course of action. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe, and I am a little confused about your comments because I don't think that what we're proposing to do is taking away any authority or any democratic process. And we'll have to talk more about this, but I don't think that that's the intent of what we're doing by renaming the HRA. If you can provide me with an instance where they actually have done anything to advance redevelopment as an authority, then I'd be glad to have that conversation. Otherwise, this is not just a move for efficiency, but for clarity as to what exactly we expect this board to do. I think even the members of the board were relieved that their scope is not so broad that they are expected to be the ones that are bringing about redevelopment. And again, this would be a good conversation to have with regard to HNDP and what the role and scope of that board is as well. But I know this isn't the time to engage in that conversation, but I appreciate your input and look forward to having that conversation with you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Carol Smith. Hello, Carol.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
My name is Carol Smith. I live at 45 West Baltimore Street, the C.W. Brooks Building. Well, I'm here again tonight on behalf of the people down where I live and the surrounding areas on the stadium being built downtown. A lot of the senior citizens are so worried about the fact that they're moving down there because there's a lot of women and gentlemen that live there. They set out sometimes till 12, 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, and we have a nice little park there. And they're all worried about, you know, the bringing more crime downtown area. That's been a lot of the problems that they're worried about. And then I also remember when the election and all, you know, we had a lot of promises, and it seems like those promises kind of disappeared. And I'm just saying that, you know, a lot of them are really upset, especially the ones that never voted in their life that we took up there to vote at 70 and 80 years old. And they're really worried about the stadium, and I'm here to voice on that because of them. A lot of them couldn't make it up here, so I came up for them. But there is a real big concern, and it's not only just with, you know, the area. We would love to keep the stadium, the Suns, in town, but not downtown. Out by the hospital, one of your other locations you all were talking about, that would be fine. I think that would put them at a peace of mind. I understand what you all are trying to do as far as the downtown, but then you've got to look at the point of, you've got three senior citizen complexes there just about together. So all I'm asking is for them telling you what they feel, because we were understood to believe that it wouldn't go downtown, and then a lot of things kept coming out in the papers, nobody was involved in, and so then they were all talking about that. So I just come up to see what, you know, what I could do and let you all know how they felt.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thanks, Carol.
Thank you.
The next person on for citizen comments is Jay Reader?
Joe.
Joe. Come on up, Joe.
I'm Joe Renner. I live at 13513 Spring Hill Drive. I'm here on behalf of all the tenants at Long Meadow Shopping Center, the merchants. We're having a problem with skateboarding. We even had an accident last week. Police were called. The police informed me that there is an ordinance, that there's no skateboarding allowed on sidewalks in parts of the city. I'm here and have signatures from all the merchants there that we would like to be included in that no skateboarding before someone gets seriously hurt. Now, when I called, I believe it was the engineering department, they informed me that that ordinance is about to be changed to the point where they are not going to be disallowing skateboarding. They're going to say that they have to keep it, keep control of the scooters, bicycles, and skateboards. The problem is that there's a lot of people in and out of not only my wife's shop, but there's a hearing aid center there that covers mostly the elderly. There's a little gym right down from us where a lot of children are in and out, and who's to determine what's control?
Well, actually, that's completely private property. So if you wanted, as merchants, to talk to the owner of the property to establish those rules-
We already have the property posted.
Okay.
Last week, they posted the whole property with no skateboarding, no bicycles, no rollerblades. But the problem is, they don't pay attention to it. And the police say there's-
Pardon? I say that's private property. I think it's the obligation of the shopping center to patrol their own property, and I can tell you now, we don't have a police force that's going to be going out to Long Meadow Shopping Center to enforce skateboarders. We just don't, that's going to be on the bottom of our list. We're short on police officers now. You're in private property that has your own security.
The problem is that they not only don't listen, but they create other problems. I had to physically remove one from my store.
That's going to be the problems of the shopping center. You have a shopping center there that needs to enforce its rules. It's not going to be something the Hagerstown City Police Force are going to be coming out doing.
I expect this cooperation like I got when we were downtown.
Thanks for your comments.
Sorry, Mr. Renner.
Next on the list is Sharon Disk. Hi, Sharon.
I'm Sharon Disk, and I'm executive director of the Hagerstown Neighborhood Development Partnership at 21 East Franklin Street. We're a nonprofit community development corporation whose purpose includes increasing financial investments in housing, commercial, and industrial projects in Hagerstown. My comments tonight address the proposed changes in the city code relative to the Hagerstown Redevelopment Authority. The existing Hagerstown Redevelopment Authority has been marginalized for years. Following the lead of city staff, the board has simply reviewed loan applications rather than performing the responsibilities granted in the existing code. I have a bachelor's degree in economics from the University of Virginia and a master's in real estate from Johns Hopkins University. I began my community and economic development career with the county's Economic Development Commission, where I worked for 12 years. During that time, I packaged numerous community development block grant projects, including the Staples Distribution Center, DOT Foods, Lucille Feeds, and others. As a consultant, I prepared training material for federally-sponsored curriculum on the use of CDBG funds for job creation and disaster recovery. In summary, I have a basic knowledge of the CDBG program. Federal regulations have created unique conditions under which this money can be expended. Those limitations demand a certain amount of expertise, and you, as elected officials, without the benefit of an active HRA, are dependent upon staff when forming your decisions related to block grant activities. What could HRA provide you as elected officials if HRA were functioning as described in the existing code? Examples include identifying how best to leverage CDBG funds with private sector investment, increasing the number and impact of revitalization projects; reviewing CDBG budget priorities, assuring consistency with program objectives; serving as a vehicle for community input in the event of natural disasters, since federal aid is typically administered via emergency block grant allocations; reviewing mid-year reprogramming of funds for council approval; participating in the discussion and planning of redevelopment properties, such as the former Washington County Hospital site; reviewing proposed incentive programs intended to stimulate revitalization; identifying projects for unexpected funding opportunities, such as HUD's Neighborhood Stabilization Program; reviewing the various city reports mandated by HUD and any audits of the department; providing knowledgeable input as a standing committee on program-related activities; assuring that all available funds awarded to the city are drawn; minimizing the wildly fluctuating amounts of unexpended allocations from year to year; evaluating program activities for income potential, which will increase the resources available for future projects; representing diverse perspectives from the community while independent of internal management pressures; and identifying cost-saving opportunities in the administration of the program, such as outsourcing. Long-term vacancies on the HRA board are not an indication that qualified individuals are unwilling to serve. Vacancies indicate that the city has not made recruitment of individuals with relevant skills a priority. Our community has the talent. The proposed changes to the code increase staff autonomy and reduce community participation in revitalization efforts. The city code doesn't need to change how we use HRA, does. Thank you.
Thanks. Next person on the list is Betty Hayes. Betty.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name is Betty Hayes. I'm on the HNDP Board of Directors, and I'm also this year president of the board for our local association of realtors. And I will tell you, if I bay before I start talking on the HRA project, that the one thing I've learned in the few months that I have been president of our association is that I need strong member input. I not only need a strong executive director to help guide us through our daily task and to further our ethics and our programs and our association, but I need the input of my membership so that we're a strong, viable organization. All of us wear so many hats today, and we bring with us such many varied skill sets to our current jobs and endeavors, that we need that input, and we need to make those people feel valued and respected in whatever capacity that they give to us. But I would like to speak now about the, sorry about that, the NRA. On May 28th, the Penmore Regional Association of Realtors and the Hagerstown Neighborhood Development Partnership hosted a real estate roundtable. The purpose of the meeting was to explore ways in which value could be added to the real estate in Hagerstown. Increasing value in the city's tax base has obvious benefits, including eliminated the need to increase tax rates and allowing government to provide necessary services which protect public health and safety. Participants in the roundtable included a commercial lender, a commercial appraiser, the county treasurer, the area supervisor of the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation, a former county commissioner, a developer, and others. Among the recommendations generated in the discussion was that the private sector professionals with real estate and financing experience be included in the city's community and economic development process. The Hagerstown Redevelopment Authority has currently, as currently described in the city's existing code, is ideal way for citizens to participate in the revitalization of Hagerstown's historic downtown. Imagine a redevelopment authority that abides by the regulations established by HUD with individuals serving in a volunteer capacity who provide assistance and oversight of the community development block grant budget and other revitalization activities. That's the HRA that legally exists today prior to the changes the mayor and council are considering. Professionals in our community have skills which can improve the government's performance. Property evaluation, financial projections, loan packaging, property acquisition and sales, and determining the economic impact are just a few of the talents available. People are willing to serve. You just have to ask them. By preserving the current language in the code, the mayor and council have an opportunity to reinvigorate a board whose role has been minimized over the years. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. The next person signed up to speak is Nancy Allen. Nancy.
Good evening. I'm here tonight as a resident of the city of Hagerstown and also as a member of the Hagerstown Tea Party. I am here tonight because I am concerned about the government process and our democratic process that we are having here within the city. As a member of the Board of Directors of the Hagerstown Tea Party, we've aspired to hold elected government officials accountable by encouraging citizen participation in the governing process. The recent city of Hagerstown election was most decidedly about the stadium. During the campaign of the election of 2012, council members stated publicly that personally had knocked on doors of citizens representing to enlist the opinion of those of the stadium issue. At that point, there was an overwhelming consensus to not spend taxpayer money on the stadium in downtown. In addition, more than 2,000 signatures were gathered and presented to the city council in opposition of the downtown stadium project. The Hagerstown Tea Party would encourage those elected officials who publicly oppose the stadium and who won the votes of those citizens who entrusted them to continue to do the people's work. The people have entrusted you to be their voice. In addition, it is imperative that the cronyism that exists between some businesses and public taxpayer money cease to exist. No more favoritism by helping those who promise investment if the city does them a favor. Tonight, the city council will vote on a motion to approve an overlay of a PUD for a school site that was purchased by the county for a use that did not exist on a property that was owned by a private individual. We ask that the city perform the diligence to ascertain whether or not it is good use of taxpayer money on a stadium before one cent is spent. Lastly, remember your call to the office is to represent your constituents honestly, openly, and with accountability, and we, the people, are expecting no less. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
Nancy, I do have a question. How are you relating the PUD overlay to the stadium?
I'm not. I am just suggesting that the PUD overlay was an example of a situation where diligence was not completed prior to purchase using taxpayer money.
That's not a city project.
I understand that.
Okay.
I understand that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I have a few more citizens signed up during the regular comments, so if you are actually signed up for one of the public hearings and you want to defer, I'll go ahead and invite you up to speak now. Barbara Overmell. Where's Barbara? Did you bring a present, Barbara?
Sure did.
Oh, great.
A reminder of time's passed.
Good evening.
Hi.
I too am here on the issue of the stadium, which is near and dear to my heart and many others like me. Nancy was mentioning that we had over 2,000 signatures. We had just about 2,700. I have them all with me. I want you to know they're real, and we thought you heard us, and we thought you would act on it. Seven of the ones that I'm carrying on my back, the names that is, we elected four to office, and we were proud of it, but we have been disappointed. And we're wanting you to know that we'd like you to do what you had promised you would do. In many ways, you have gone back on your word. We have one council member that has done so much work to be elected. He deserves new shoes. A thousand homes? How many people did he talk to? And what did he say he would do? Not vote for a stadium downtown? And what has happened? He has changed his mind. I was at the breakfast at the Chamber on October 3rd where he stated he would not vote for a stadium downtown. He has since changed his mind. He thinks there is great economic benefit to this town by doing so. We have found many ways to show otherwise last year, and we could do so again. We are deeply disappointed. We had hoped, a word is a word, campaign promises are taken by the people as gospel, if you will, and then to turn around and not do, as you say, is unbelievable to us. Is there any wonder that people have no trust in government? We had hoped that the right thing to do would be, as we had asked you to do, is revamp what we have, municipal stadium as it stands. It can be done at great less expense than what we're talking about, $37 million. It is truly sad because we have so much history in this town and county that we are benefiting from. It's been in the paper recently how much benefit has come to this county and city because of the history we have that nobody else has. They wish they did, but they don't, and yet we're not making hay of it. We're not making enough to do about it that we can benefit from all of it, and we can with this municipal stadium, which does have history. Nothing on the east coast or anywhere in the county do I know of do they have a stadium like we do, where there have been players that are in history books, if you will, and could bring great benefit to us. We had hoped that you would bring back- We had hoped that you would bring back the old-time baseball teams with old-time uniforms, do away with the electric scoreboards, any old thing like that, to bring it back to the way it used to be, that's what people want. They feel connected to this ball team, to the stadium. I did. Where you see, you're here, you can tell everything that's going on, not like a stadium, multi-whatever. You might as well sit home in front of your large TV screen and see better than what you can see in these huge stadiums that are being built everywhere. We also had thought that you would want to do something about the East End. I know I'm taking extra time, but I'm speaking for a lot of people here that can't make it tonight, so I ask your indulgence to please hear me out. Julie Ribbit is undergoing surgery today. She can't be here. A lot of people are working or sick or on vacation. So I would like to read to you what I just found in the paper today under letters to the editor as well. Please do not my tax dollars to help the Suns build a new stadium. We, the taxpayers, should not be burdened with another project here in Maryland. If the Suns want a new facility, they should raise the funds needed to build what they want or what the National Washington Nationals want. Ron Bauer said in a newspaper that most people he talked with want this new stadium. Most of the people I have talked with about this do not want tax dollars spent on this. Art Callahan now comes out supporting Bauer, said it is more than a stadium and good for our community. It will be mainly a baseball stadium, with use dictated by the Suns' management. Those of you who support this project and benefit from it, put your money in it and not the taxpayers. The Suns owners have worked Winchester, Frederick, and Hagerstown to work a deal to their best interest. I say to our government officials, do not use tax dollars to make this happen. This is Mr. Harry Soffler. He lives in Brightwood Acres, Hagerstown. There's much more I would like to say, but disappointment is our biggest thing right now. We're disappointed in the outcome, and why even talk about this again? What has changed? Nothing has changed. We don't have a magic wand that went across and took care of the traffic problems and everything else that would need be done to bring this something like that to even being, which it should not be. Help the East End, Mayor and Council. Revamp the stadium and do all the other things. Tear the light plant down. Expand. The Spring Works are for sale for a whole lot less than we've been told, than I've been told. There's so much that can be done, and the East End does need revamping as well and redevelopment. Sorry, redevelopment. I thank you for my time, and I hope here to see that you will do the right thing for all the people, not just a few. Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara. Mr. Tim Light is the next speaker on the list.
I wonder why the microphone keeps going up and down. Does anybody know why the volume keeps doing that? Is there a short?
No, I'm not a microphone.
You can hear it back here. My name is Tim Light, L-I-G-H-T. I live at 13318 Morgansville Road in Hagerstown, Maryland. I signed up to come in here and talk a little bit about code enforcement, but before I do that, I just want to take a few seconds to follow what Ms. Hovermell said when we had the former mayor here, Bob Bruci. I'm the representative of the Physiox with the Spring Works and the Fries that own across the street with the bonded applicators building and the old consolidated freight building behind the Venice. What Mrs. Hovermell said is 110% truth. When Bob was mayor, I called all the council members repeatedly. Danny called them for me and emailed them to try to do a deal with the Physiox, that they would finance their property at a low percentage rate for the city to help expand the existing stadium, so that this is on record. And the only one that responded back to me was Bill Brechner and Al Martin. Al called me and said, "Tim, you got the right idea. This is what we need to do." So I'm on the record. That's the only two that responded to me, and Danny can vouch for that, and you all know who Danny is. So now we're going to go on to code enforcement. I got a letter yesterday from code enforcement, and I'm going to give this to Bill. You can look at that, Bill. I wanted you to see the letter inside. I think we might get a laugh out of that. But I own a property at 10 and 12 Elizabeth Street that I bought in the late '70s. Since I've owned a property, put two new roofs on it. The 10 side's a single-family dwelling. The 12 side is two apartments. Back in July of 2010, I took an $8,000 deposit on the property from Harry Stottlemyre to buy the property. The city encourages homeownership on these properties. This property, since I've had it in the '70s, three new kitchens, three new hot water heaters, two new furnaces, two roofs, brand-new electric service into the building, a new back porch, and Chuck Harrell put a new sidewalk out front when Columbia Gas used my sidewalk to put the new gas line in years ago and busted the whole sidewalk up. Anyway, I get a phone call Thursday from Mr. Stottlemyre, who has equitable title to the property and has been there. We haven't went to settlement on it because he hasn't had the money to go to settlement, but he has equitable title to the property with the contract. I was taken to court over this by Mark Bill, and Judge Beachley told Mr. Boyer, "If you ever bring this man in here again for this, we're going to have an issue." I had to appeal at the Circuit Court, and Judge Beachley awarded the City of Hagerstown $1. Who knows how many thousands they wasted on this nonsense of putting up with this? So I get this call Thursday from Harry Stottlemyre. Sue Kylie, a city employee, is up there telling him to leave his property and being very mean to him, and he says the police are there. So I wasn't in Hagerstown, but I called the city police department, and I got an Officer Kifer. I said, "Do you know what's going on at 10 and 12 Elizabeth Street?" He said, "All I know is the City of Hagerstown called us and said to bring police up there that people broke and entered." So I know Councilman Mensner made an argument earlier, "You're short a policeman. Obviously not too short to send two to Elizabeth Street," when code enforcement calls them to kick a man off of a property that he has $8,000 deposit on and is living there. And to make matters worse, here we are, 100-degree temperature. Person died in Frederick, down by our office in Frederick, from heat. I saw in the paper they arrested a woman for a dog in a car for heat and charged her for having a dog in there. Here, you guys have a city employee, Sue Kylie, taking this man off of his property, forcing him off of the property with two other city code enforcement officers and two city policemen. So obviously, there's not a waste of money for code enforcement to bring out, as I told this -- not this council, but I know Mr. Mensner was a council member then. The Nazi regime, because I got about 100 phone calls from property owners, "Tim, please support us. They treat us like Nazis."
Can you wrap it up, please?
Yeah, I'm going to wrap it up. Mr. Stottlemyre not only was forced to leave the property, not offered any place to go, any place to live, a drink of water. I wouldn't do that to a dog, okay? Not only that, she called other people in that boarded this house up, that he just put brand-new vinyl windows in, painted all the wooden trim. The house is 100 years old. Bill's been up to it before. He knows what I'm talking about. This is insanity. And I would have been here earlier and signed earlier.
Thank you.
I had to find Mr. Stottlemyre. He's living in a tent in the woods. He's here. Harry, stand up.
I appreciate you --
Tell him how you were treated.
Thank you. I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Your time has run out, so --
Well, that --
I appreciate you --
I'm --
I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. This is the first I've even heard about this, so I can guarantee you I'll be following up with staff.
Yeah, well, this is repeated, and you probably just repeated the from this code enforcement. I don't want to hear that.
Okay, thank you.
Nobody wants to hear this, that you've never heard of this. This is nonsense. Everybody --
It's the first I've heard of this particular case. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Just like what's going on on Oak Hill with that tree.
Thank you.
You've been out there involved in that, too?
Thank you. Mr. -- is it Harry? Harry Stanton? Someone, 10 Elizabeth Street. Okay, come on up, sir.
Yeah, I'm Harry Stottlemyre. I live at 10 Elizabeth. Mr. Tim Light was telling everything, the truth. She threw me out, and I'm living in the woods in a tent, and that's my own house, and I don't see how they can do that.
Mm-hmm.
I bought brand-new windows and doors and all tried to fix the place up. It done ruin everything. I put screws and plywood all over the windows and doors. But that's about all I got to say. He was saying the right stuff about her.
Okay. Well, I appreciate this. Like I said, this is the first time I've heard of this particular case.
Right.
So I will follow up with staff.
But I'd like to know how I can get back in my own house. She wouldn't let me have my clothes or nothing in there. She just ran me off my property.
Well, I'll consult with staff, and we'll definitely follow up. Do we have your contact information? Do you have a phone number that we can get in touch with?
Yeah, well, you can contact Mr. Tim Light, and he can contact me.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
I have a Nicole. Don't know how to pronounce the last name.
I'm just a witness to your case.
Okay, would you like to make a statement? Okay, please come to the microphone and state your name and address, please.
My name's Nicole Kadju. I live 542 Washington Avenue, apartment 2. I was there the day that Sue Kylie came in and kicked Harry Stottlemyre off his property.
Okay.
And they boarded the place up, ruining siding, ruining his windows, his new doors. You know, we've been trying to fix the place up lately, you know, and she just came in on a rampage. She even got mad at me, you know, and, I mean, she just treated him like an absolute dog.
Well, I appreciate you speaking on his behalf, and like I said, we will look into this matter and get in touch with Mr. Stottlemyre.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the citizen comments that I have folks signed up for. We do have some public hearings, so if there aren't any other citizens who'd like to make general comments, yes, sir, would you like to come forward, please? Please state your name and address for the record.
Mayor, my name is John Benisek. I actually just came to hear about the stadium and realized certainly there would be public and private money involved. And I kind of wonder, the money that will be coming from the public sector would be something that was collected from Washington County and the citizens of Hagerstown. Is there any other way to get the money back to the community without having to spend it on a sports complex stadium? I know this is something that each year the community tries to get back the money, Community Development Block grants, anything else that's available. But why not get it and spend it on a worthwhile endeavor for the community besides a sports complex? Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, so at this point, we'll close the citizen comments and go into our public hearings. The first one is for the zoning -- I'm sorry, the Hager's Crossing PUD Amendment for West City Elementary School. I'm going to turn it over to our trustee staff, Alex Ruhrbaugh.
Thank you. Good evening. This is case number ZM 201301. This is a PUD amendment for the Hager's Crossing development for the proposed West City Elementary School. Let's give you a little background on this site. This is, again, this is part of the Hager's Crossing Residential Development. This property was developed as a -- or, excuse me, zoned as a PUD, a Planned Unit Development Overlay, back in 2002. The original Hager's Crossing PUD called for 381 single-family dwellings, 261 townhouses, 264 multifamily units, and a community center and open space. The parcel in question tonight was the parcel originally proposed to contain the 264 multifamily units. Those never were developed, likely a consequence of the economic downturn. In 2011, the Board of Ed put together a site selection committee, which consisted of city staff, county staff, and Washington County Public Schools staff to look at possible new elementary school that would replace the existing Winter Street Elementary, as well as the existing Conica Jig Elementary School, with a location in mind somewhere on the west side of Hagerstown. And there's a couple of criteria they looked at, including compatibility with adjacent land uses, proximity to existing development, and a location that could provide walkability for students. We ultimately -- I was on that committee, and we ultimately explored 22 sites, and the committee came up with the Hager's Crossing site as being the optimal site. The county purchased the site in 2012 with the anticipation of putting the school there. Since this PUD never had a plan for a school, even though it is a permitted use in a PUD, it still has to be amended, and so a PUD re-amendment is treated like a normal rezoning, so that's why we're going through this process. Just a little bit on public input so far. On April 24th of this year, city, county, and school staff met with citizens out at the Hager's Crossing Community Center, with citizens from Hager's Crossing. The purpose of the meeting was to give neighborhood residents a chance to learn about the proposed school, and we had approximately 60 people in attendance that night from the neighborhood and generally seemed very favorable of the school. And we've since that time promised to keep them in the loop for upcoming meetings through a listserv and through their HOA. During the Planning Commission public review process, we received testimony from 10 residents at Hager's Crossing, including -- that were in favor of the proposed amendment. We also heard from Larry Rahuba, who is the original developer for the Hager's Crossing development, stating he was in favor of the project. Just a little bit about the site itself. It's at the northeast corner of Hager's Crossing Drive and Barto Drive. That's where the traffic circle is, if you go back behind the shopping center. Size of the tract is 16 and 1/2 acres. PUDs have different requirements in terms of lot size or -- sorry, parcel sizes, tract sizes, density. That was all covered under the PUD, the original PUD plan, so the amendment of this PUD to allow the school, those things are already covered, so those don't really apply in this case. We would, as staff, anticipate a site plan coming in for the school towards the end of this process. More on the site. Traffic flow. Eventually, the development of Hager's Crossing that's west of that traffic circle will hit the threshold that will require a connection to -- to require Hager's Crossing Drive to connect to McDade. Right now, it's just it dead-ends back there. Since the school is east of the traffic circle, that connection to McDade is not required by the school. City engineering staff also looked at the ITE, the traffic trip generation model, to determine what the traffic impact would be with the result of a school going there, and compared it to what it would be if there were multifamily units on the site. A school of about 63,000 square feet would generate 924 daily trips. A 240 multifamily apartment complex would generate 1,400 daily trips. So the school overall generates less. However, with the school, you have higher traffic at peak times, morning and afternoon. And the city engineer would require that a second left turn lane be added to US 40 eastbound and Center Boulevard in order to minimize stacking. The Planning Commission, at its June 13th meeting, recommended approval of the PUD with the following condition, that the school be oriented more towards Hager's Crossing Drive and the close enough of the street to provide for a more traditional neighborhood design. The concept alternative, which is in your packet and is also later in this presentation, generally satisfies that requirement. And last week, there was a meeting hosted by the Washington County Public Schools. And, uh, last week, there was a meeting, um, hosted by the Washington County Public Schools, in which they unveiled a, another concept, which is, again, consistent with the, uh, the requirement that the school be oriented towards Hager's Crossing. It's just a slight variation of the concept alternative that's in your packet. And, again, the concept alternative is not a site plan. We would expect that there will be some variabilities between the concept plan and the site plan itself. The concept plan does provide, I should, sorry, the, the condition of approval, it does provide for flexibility, um, between the concept plan and the site plan. Uh, just a little bit on our rezoning process, we're having the public hearing tonight. We'll bring this back to you in an August work session. And then following would be introduction and adoption of the rezoning, um, should you wish to approve it. And then a rezoning would take effect 30 days after adoption. This time, I'd like to enter into the record the certificate of advertisement and the planning commission filed by reference.
Thank you.
And this is just a map of the site, uh, the school site is outlined in blue, and this is the Hager's Crossing development. This is a picture of the site. Another picture of the site. And then this is the concept alternative that was provided in your packets, and, uh, this is what was submitted with the application. After I'm, my presentation, there will also be a presentation from the applicant, but at this time, I will take any questions from the mayor and council.
Any questions from the council?
I have one. We talked about this a little bit at our workshop, but the planning commission recommendation, the condition that's placed upon the approval, it states that the school shall be oriented towards Hager's Crossing Drive and should be close enough to the street to provide for a more traditional neighborhood design. And while I certainly understand, uh, the jargon within that, that condition, it is, um, a, a bit nebulous. So, uh, my curiosity is, in approving this amendment to the PUD, that, uh, any change to that wouldn't have to come back to this body, correct?
That, that, that's correct. It would be, the staff would determine that, that that's consistent with the condition that's approved.
So the planning commission would be the entity that would approve any changes to that specific condition?
Well, the specific condition would be approved by mayor and council. It would be the responsibility of the staff and the commission to make sure that that's...
And, and, and I hear what you're saying. What I don't want is for confusion to occur, that, that, uh, a site design comes back, and I couldn't begin to tell you what oriented towards Hager's Crossing Drive means, because you have buses and cars coming in. Does that mean that one specific drive aisle or the address? I mean, I gotta tell you, I read that, and it's pretty nebulous what we're conditioning on this development, uh, because two paragraphs down, it says that the concept alternative is not a site plan, but the paragraph above that says that basically the concept alternative and the concept meets this criteria, but it doesn't specify, uh, at least for me, what towards Hager's Crossing Drive means, nor what, uh, uh, the second part of that, "close enough."
We would expect...
Is that 40 feet, or 60 feet, or 100 feet?
We, uh, the, the, the condition allows for the flexibility. We'd want to set it at a specific feet, like 50 or 70. But bear in mind that the concept plan and the site plan, although they will be different, they will not be, we would not expect them to be radically different, and we would not expect the school to be, you know, sitting at the back of the property. It does provide, but we do feel that the, the condition does provide some flexibility, um, between the site plan and the concept plan, without necessarily locking it into a specific setback.
Kristin, the, the planning commission looked at two particular concepts, which actually isn't technically part of this process. And preferred after discussion with both our city staff and with WCPS staff about, uh, not only the orientations toward Hager's Crossing, but stacking of traffic, uh, to the various approaches to the school and so forth, that they preferred the option that was closer to Hager's Crossing Road. Just precisely how close and exactly where on the site it, i- i- is, uh, to be determined through the site plan process. It was just an indication, trying to do the school board a favor, indicating, uh, what the preference was, so that we don't waste time spinning wheels on other concepts that, uh, may not be as preferable.
But the concept plan submitted as part of this presentation is not part of this PUD approval?
It's an, as I understand, it's exemplary. Is that correct, Alex?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Alex before we take public comment? Thank you, Alex.
Also, there will be a brief presentation from the applicant.
Is that Mr. Downey? All right, please come forward. He's the only one that signed up to speak anyway, so...
Mr. Trostel from Frederick Cyber will also be speaking.
Okay.
On behalf of the, uh, Board of Education, as was the county. Good evening, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh, council members. My name is Kirk Downey. I'm deputy county attorney. Uh, I'm here on behalf of the county commissioners, who are the current, uh, property owner of the, uh, school site, proposed school site. Like to just briefly tell you how we got here this evening. The Board of Education, several years ago, notified the county of the need to replace two, uh, aging schools with a more modern facility. So the, uh, Board of Education, the city, and the county, uh, put together a site selection committee. 22 sites were identified as being potential, uh, sites for the school. They were studied, and as a result of that study, the subject site, uh, rose to the top of the list as being the site that best met, uh, the school needs, as well as being the cheapest, lowest-cost, uh, site to acquire in a ready-to-build state. The necessary, uh, utilities were, uh, were present at this site, and therefore, uh, it is, uh, suitable for, for building without any further utility extension or development. That identification of this site, uh, was made, uh, during the late part of 2011, December, I believe it was. And in late September of 2012, after negotiations with the property owner, the site was purchased by the county. Thereafter, the Board of Education received final state approval to close, uh, Winter Street Elementary and Conica Jig Elementary. The, uh, architects and, uh, land engineers were brought on board to develop this application, that is before you this evening, and that application, uh, was filed in April of this year. The applicant would like to thank the county, or would like to thank the city, uh, and its staff for their assistance in moving through this process. Kathy and Alex have been, uh, very helpful, and, um, the county and the Board of Education have, uh, been treated, uh, kindly and with courtesy, and the review has been expedited. Suffice to say that since we filed this application, we couldn't have gotten to you here this evening any faster. So we certainly appreciate that. The site itself is 16.52 acres located in the Hager's Crossing Planned Unit Development. As Alex indicated, it is at the northeast corner of Hager's Crossing Drive and Barto Drive. It is currently a vacant, undeveloped parcel. The Hager's Crossing PUD was approved in 2002, and that approval allowed for 381 single-family homes, 261 townhouses, and 264 apartments. The, uh, development also has a community center and various open space amenities. Surrounding this property, across the street to the west, is the community center for the development. To the north is, uh, cropland. There are townhomes, uh, to the east of the property, and single-family dwellings to the south of the property. At this time, 408 units have been built in the development. 244, uh, remain to be built, and most of those 244 are, uh, single-family dwellings. Alex indicated briefly why we are here this evening, but, uh, I, I want to go over that again, just to make this clear. The underlying zoning on this property is RMed, uh, and that is overlaying, as you know, with a planned unit development zone. Both the underlying zoning, as well as the PUD overlay, allow school facilities as principally permitted uses. Therefore, the zoning allows for this site. The only reason we're here this evening is to update the planned unit development map or plan for this site to show, instead of having apartments at that location, there's going to be a school. And that is necessary because, um, obviously by the name of this overlay zone, planned unit development, it's a unit, uh, it is a, an overlay zone that allows for greater variety of uses, but uses that are, uh, meant to be compatible with one another, uh, both residentially, commercially, as well as, uh, institutionally. Finally, the planning, uh, commission reviewed this amendment and made the following motion, to recommend to the mayor and council that they approve the planned unit development amendment with the alternative, alternative concept as a preferred layout for the reasons that the alternate layout would create fewer demands on the infrastructure than a multifamily resident, residential development. And second, that the school use would contribute to the resident's sense of community. We would submit this evening that the application and the materials in the record, as well as the testimony and evidence that will be produced tonight, are more than sufficient to support the proposed PUD amendment. The rezoning staff analysis addresses the specific requirements for a PUD establishment and amendment, and indicates that each of the legally required factors have been satisfied. I will now, uh, briefly, uh, turn the stadium over to Mr. Trostel, if he has any additional site-specific comments that he wishes to make. And obviously, there are representatives here, uh, both from the county, the engineer, as well as the Board of Education, to answer any questions that any of you may have this evening.
Thank you.
Good evening. As Kirk mentioned, I'm Dave Trostel. I'm a project manager with Frederick Cyber and Associates, the, the civil engineer on this project. Between Kirk and Alex, they both did a very good job describing, um, what we are here asking for this evening, so I won't bore you with, um, the same details, but there were a few things I did want to point out. This is the piece of property that we're talking about. You have the Walmart Shopping Center out here. This is the original PUD for the property. This is the 264, um, multi-use, um, apartments or condos that were approved with the original PUD. And on that, there was one athletic field. The other fields were over with the community center. With this layout, we were proposing 720 parking spaces. As I mentioned, the one open space lot, and roughly about 1,400 average, average daily trips with this use. This is the current status, status of the, um, development. Uh, these are the single-family homes that are currently built out here. These are the townhomes. This is where we're, um, proposing the school. This is the roundabout, and everything that was talked about, west of the roundabout. These homes are constructed, and there's about 244 yet to be built out here. Once that is built, this connection with McDade Road will be made. So, um, providing Hager's Crossing, um, connection, the hallway from McDade Road, all the way out to Garland Grove Boulevard. Uh, there were some, some concerns about traffic down here at the entrance to the shopping center. Uh, with this development, we will be increasing, um, the, uh, left turn lane at the light. Currently, there is only one left turn lane. We will be providing an extra turn lane, so there will be two turn lanes heading back to the roundabout. Uh, as I had mentioned previously, with the parking, there was proposed 720 parking spaces. We are down to 125. So this lot will be a lot more green with open space and athletic fields than was proposed in the original PUD. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to point out, um, there was a question about stormwater. There's an existing stormwater pond on this, uh, site already that will be utilized with this development. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, that, uh, concludes the hearing, unless there are any other folks who would like to speak about the PUD. Yes, ma'am, please come forward and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Karen McCarthy, and, uh, my address is 12113 Fallen Timber Circle. I am a resident of this community, and I'm just here to, uh, show my support for the, um, the amendment and for the school. I think it'll be a great thing for our school, for our community. Um, I'm also a teacher, so, you know, I think it's, I, I think it would be fabulous, uh, from a community standpoint, for the kids in the school and for the community to be able to come together in that place, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Dave, I have one more question. I have one more question.
Yes, Mr. Alshar.
You, the, you stated, uh, during your presentation that the 725 spaces, the parking spaces, that was previously for the roughly 280 homes, uh, apartments, right? I just want clarity on that.
That's correct. In the, um, original plan, there was 720 parking spaces required for the multifamily units.
And that will be replaced by 125 for the school, correct?
That's what we're proposing with, with that concept that you see, yes.
Okay. And, and this isn't really a question for you, but more so for staff, and, and I didn't catch this in, in the staff's presentation, but the 725 spaces were strictly a requirement for that piece of the development, correct? Okay.
Any other questions or comments from council? Going once, going twice? Okay. We will officially close that public hearing and open up the public hearing on land...
Dave, for 10 days, you're gonna keep the record open?
Right. Is there a motion to do such?
Well, I, I think you...
Standard, we keep the record open for 10 days if, if folks want to. Thank you for the reminder. We will keep the record open for 10 days, uh, to receive other feedback for folks who couldn't be here tonight, either in writing, or you can make phone calls, too.
And mayor, just to clarify then, it would be on a work session agenda, probably August 13th? It'd be two weeks from, or three weeks from now? And then, depending on mayor and council's discussion, then it could come up for a vote at your regular meeting on the 27th.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
And I don't know if Dave said it, but I know that Dr. Wilcox and some of the, the county folks, the elected Board of Ed members are in the audience, so...
Thank you, yes. Dr. Wilcox, Ms. Brightman, and, uh, Mr. Hardings from the Board of Education are here, and Mr. Murray, the county administrator's here as well. We appreciate their attendance.
Slightly different menu of topics than what you're used to, I think.
Yes. Thank you all. The, uh, next public hearing will be on the Land Management Code text amendments. These, uh, for various, uh, changes.
Yes, good evening. Steve Ock Miller for the Planning and Code Administration Division. This is a public hearing for zoning text amendment 2013-01. I'll enter the documentation of legal advertisement and planning commission filed by reference at the outset, so I don't forget about it at the end. This is a package of, uh, 24 proposed amendments to the Land Management Code. Just to give you a little bit of background, uh, a, a lengthy process began in 2007, 2008 to completely revamp all of our land management codes. We had four subdivision, zoning, forest conservation, floodplain management. And what we did is we melded all of those into one single document called the Land Management Code, and it was adopted as Chapter 140 of the city code. We didn't do a whole lot of content amendment, uh, it was... It was all focused on basically taking the existing content of those four separate and distinct ordinances and making them all one document and making sure they all work together. The second step was to then take that newly melded ordinance and then go through it page by page and bring it up to current standards. Our zoning ordinance had not been updated in many years, and some of the other ordinances in the same way. And that process took several years to complete and was finally adopted and completed late last year. This is the third and final step of that process. Given the magnitude and extent of completely shuffling and rewriting a document that is about this thick, there will be things that might not get picked up on. The good thing is, is we found far fewer issues than we anticipated, but we always anticipated a third and final cleanup phase, which this is. Because we were processing this, we also have a few new items of new material that we're including in the package, but the total number of issues is a total of 24, most of which are pretty minor routine and housekeeping-type things. There are a few things that have drawn attention or are of some significance, one of which is there's a proposal where we will then, we will adopt a new Chapter 140 that is essentially two pages long, and then we will refer by reference to the Land Management Code and maintain it as a separate document. This is similar to how we deal with the Building Code or the Plumbing Code, which aren't included verbatim in the city code, but it'll help the administration of our codes, both the city code and also our individual division codes, in a more efficient and cost-effective manner. Another thing that is part of this package is standards for signs. We had pretty limited standards for signs within the city, and this brings them more up to current industry standards. Another item that's in this package is one that was brought to your attention a number of weeks ago by representatives of the local automobile sales industry regarding concerns about their properties being made non-conforming. We have a proposal which sets standards for the development of future car sales facilities and exempts the ones that are currently in place. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on all of these items and has forwarded this package of 24 items to you. There's one additional item that will be brought to your attention this evening. Jill Estevio, the city's Economic Development Director, will be testifying in favor of an adjustment to the land use chart in Article 4 that would allow retail operations in industrial districts with a special exception under certain performance standards that make it very similar to other mixed-use districts in the city. But I'll leave it to Ms. Estevio to present it to you in more detail. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions from council? Looks like not.
Thank you.
Ms. Jill Estevio, Economic Development Director for the city.
Thank you. I'm Jill Estevio, Economic Development Manager for the city, and we're requesting a text change to the Land Management Code to allow general retail as a special exception, use in the industrial restricted zoning districts subject to two conditions. The first condition being, the retail use shall not occupy more than 25% of the total gross square footage of floor area of buildings on a single property, or buildings in a unified development under common ownership spanning more than one property. And the second condition, that off-street parking shall be provided in accordance with the current parking standards in the Land Management Code for all uses on the property unless a variance is granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals. These conditions provide protections that address concerns the Planning Commission had related to allowing unrestricted general retail in the industrial restricted zoning districts. It's important to note that the Land Management Code currently allows retail and wholesale sale of home improvement materials and supplies within a minimum floor area of 25,000 square feet to a maximum of 75,000 square feet in the IR zoning districts. This amendment would allow for uses by special exception that are similar in nature but are not specifically named, and such a change would support economic development activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Jill?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would recommend that she's proposing amending the work that the Planning Commission has done, and I understand it's a matter of urgency, so I believe that it's in the nature of the council was empowered to change or add to what the Planning Commission has recommended. And I would recommend that we take this matter up in that view and under those provisions in our work session.
So you support this amendment?
Yes. I support moving forward with it and bringing it to the mayor and council for further discussion, but yes, I-
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you. I don't have anybody signed up to speak on this. If there is somebody in the audience who would like to speak on this, Land Management Code text amendments, be willing to-
I apologize, but I would like to also make a general comment.
Please.
I think Mr. Bachmiller did not do himself, the Planning Commission and the staff enough credit. This major revision, most of which the council has seen before and the previous council has seen, was also for efficiency and trying to make it more user-friendly and more coordinated and everything, but I think a big part of it was trying to make it easier to use, trying to, believe it or not, simplify a lot of complicated stuff and use charts and so forth. And I don't like words like absolute and final, so I would wager that things will still be found in that much work to be brought back, even though Steve has said this is the final major change, is the way I would put it, the final major package to be given to the council. But I don't want to promise that something might not turn up in the nature of an improvement or an oversight in this text. And then finally, I don't want that to get confused. There are still parts of the city comprehensive plan, the hospital site, I believe the MELP and Urban Fiber Site, and some others that were deliberately left out of the last comprehensive plan, but that's the comprehensive plan, it's not this package. So that's not part of what he's saying. Just want to make that clear.
Thank you. Yes, this process started back when I was still on the Planning Commission. It's been a few years, I would say, in the making, so.
But a lot of hard work and a lot of effort.
Very good work by staff. Thank you. Well, with that, we will keep the record open for 10 days for this hearing as well, and any correspondence can be sent to City Hall via the city clerk for distribution to us as elected officials. And this, too, will be on a future work session and scheduled for a vote. And that will close the second public hearing of tonight. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is approval of minutes.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for approval of minutes. These presented from mayor and council, meaning held on June 4, June 11, June 18, and June 27 of 2013.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Metzner and a second by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All in favor of the approval of minutes, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Eyes have it. The minutes are approved. Next up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that all the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Been a motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Metzner to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The eyes have it, the consent agenda is approved. Under unfinished business, we have the approval of an ordinance authorizing the sale of 1112 and 1516 Public Square.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the mayor and council to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of properties located at 1112 and 1516 Public Square for the sum of $240,000 and in accordance with all terms and conditions outlined in the purchase agreement.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
Just two points. The first is for the folks that may be watching and have had the question of, you know, whether or not these four addresses include all of that property on Public Square from the corner of Potomac and Washington up into the access into the central lot. It does not. It only includes the property in between the Elizabeth Hager Center and the property on the corner, so, you know, I just don't want folks, and I know they've gotten wrong ideas out there, that, you know, we're selling this quarter of a block area for $240,000, and that is simply not the case. The second point is, we did receive some correspondence regarding an agreement that we entered into with this property and its original, I guess, neighboring owner as it relates to, you know, long-term agreements with the elevator. I would assume that we are working toward amicable terms on that specific item so that everybody has a clear understanding once we are out of it.
My understanding on that is that it is incumbent upon the private property owners to resolve that issue, that the agreement transfers with the property, not necessarily with the parties involved. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Four ayes, one nay. The ordinance is passed. Next up is approval of an ordinance for a smoking ban in University Plaza.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the approval of an ordinance prohibiting smoking in University Plaza. This action is taken in cooperation with the University System of Maryland and their prohibition of smoking on their campuses. A violation shall be treated as a municipal infraction and subject to fines set forth in the ordinance.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
The only discussion I would have is I would like to see a work session to see about expanding this ban to our public parks.
Duly noted.
Thank you. It's on for the 20th or the 13th of August, one of those two work sessions.
Fine, thank you.
We will get it back to you next month.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ordinance is approved. Next up is the approval of an ordinance amending city code Chapter 57 for bicycles and other human-powered vehicles, Section 57-2 and 57-3.
Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 57, bicycles and other human-powered vehicles to combine Section 57-2 and 57-3 into a single section prohibiting the operation of bicycles or play vehicles in a reckless manner upon any street of the city or upon any city-owned property.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
I'd just like to ask, I'm assuming, we had a citizen's comment, I'm assuming we're all correct that Long Meadow Shopping Center is private property and not something subject to government ordinances or government enforcement.
That's correct.
And those who decide to move their businesses off the public way to ways where that is allowed, where public, where the police would enforce, have got to take care of it with the Long Meadow Shopping Center folks.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I have a question, and that is, again, this is control. They are to be under the, whatever they are using, skateboards, bicycles, whatever, they have got to have control, all right? So then, basically, we're going to have everybody zipping up and down and anywhere, but we're saying, control. This is almost like the leash law with the dogs, when, before it became, hey, yeah, you have to have a leash now, correct?
That's correct.
I think so, Penny. Also, it is almost-
Well, it's just that, at one point, it was down around this area.
Right.
And now it is to involve all streets.
Right.
Okay?
And it's almost like the vehicle laws of negligence. You're just not allowed to ride a bicycle on a mountain.
Right. And the bottom line is, is that somebody's got to be there seeing it happen, because otherwise, nothing's going to happen.
Right.
And I think the word reckless is important here, not just the control, but that they're operating it in a reckless fashion.
Well, and again, it's catching the person.
Right, and that's exactly right.
That's going to be a very difficult situation.
Very difficult.
Okay, that I don't even know, you know, when you were saying downtown, at least, you were able to gain a little control of what was going on, but all the streets of the city are not gaining anything.
Now, if we enforced it in one private shopping center, then we'd have to go into all the other-
No, 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 no.
I know, but I just wanted to make that-
No, that has nothing to do with that.
I understand, Penny. I just thought that's a clarification, though, on the private shopping center issue.
I don't think we have the power to enforce it-
I don't believe we do.
-private property, even if we wanted to.
No, and as far as the owner of the store in the shopping center, again, it's one of those situations that he was asking to see, okay, we can't do it, but it certainly would be nice to be able to convey to any of those, because the Long Meadow Shopping Center is in fact under us, is it not? Even though it's privately owned?
The roads are, but the sidewalks are not.
But it's still in the city limits.
The city, yes.
Okay, it is still in the city limits, therefore, our police do have to respond to it, all other entities, okay? That's the reason. But no, this was specifically for the city of Hagerstown. And again, how are you going to enforce it? Okay, that's all.
All right. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion's been made and seconded, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay. I just have a problem with it. And it's not because I am not in sympathy with those who get hit by bicycles, skateboards, or otherwise, but I just don't see the point of how it is, how it's stated. There's not teeth.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the approval of an ordinance amending city code Chapter 95, excessive use of police services, amending the definition of board.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council approval of an ordinance to amend the definition of board in Section 2 of Chapter 95 to include a representative of the city's Department of Community and Economic Development.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
I have a question. Under the recital section, whereas the Board of Public Safety has been eliminated by the city of Hagerstown, just so I understand this correctly, the board that is, I guess, is being supplemented here, the appointment, there will still be an appointment from the Police Department, City Administration, and Department of Community and Economic Development. And I'm trying to, trying to figure out. So all this is doing is adding an individual from that department to this appeals board?
It's, it's, it's removing the requirement that there be a member of the Board of Public Safety, because that board no longer exists, and substituting a, someone representing the Department of Community and Economic Development for the person on the Board of Public Safety that no longer exists.
As an also, not as an in lieu of.
No, it's in lieu of. Because there is no Board of Public Safety anymore.
But we're adding that one because there is no board.
Right.
So it's an also where we're adding that one. It isn't like we're saying one will not come.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, again, I have a major problem with the Board of Public Safety that being eliminated. When we first came into office, I had said, is it not possible to look at the Board of Public Safety being brought out of being asleep to having it wide open again? And therefore, there was just really nothing that was discussed about it. But again, there's citizens' input that we've taken away. I don't know how long the Board of Public Safety was there, but I know that it was active at least 15 years ago or more. I don't know how much longer than that, but I think that it's a very important board. I do understand the concept, because I had talked to Chief Holtzman, but again- I do understand the concept because I had talked to Chief Holtzman, but again, why is it that we have to put the Board of Public Safety has been eliminated? Is it totally done? Has it been totally done? Has it gone?
Mayor and council voted in 2011 to eliminate the board after discussing the role and purpose of the board with the police and fire chief at that time. I asked Chief Holtzman and Chief Dietrich to get together, review that information, develop their thoughts, and we'll be prepared in August to discuss that with the mayor and council. But it was eliminated by a vote of the council in 2011.
Yeah, well, you know, again, I just, it's very sad. It really is very sad. Go ahead, Mayor.
Call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm saying nay, and only because of the way it's stating as the Board of Public Safety being gone.
Thank you. Motion is carried and the ordinance is approved. Onto new business. This is the introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 33 of the City Code with the, for the Code of Ethics.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the mayor and council to introduce an ordinance to amend Chapter 33, Code of Ethics of the City Code, to include a definition of gift, clarify financial reporting requirements for elected officials, to revise financial disclosure requirements for non-elected officials and employees to comport with Maryland law, to revise lobbying, gift disclosure limitations to comport with Maryland law, and to revise and clarify disciplinary actions for violations.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire, Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All those in favor of the introduction of the ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 10, Part 2, Article 13, Hagerstown Redevelopment Authority of the City Code.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and city council to introduce an ordinance to amend the Code of the City of Hagerstown, Chapter 10, Part 2, Article 13. This amendment repeals and replaces the current Article 13. The amended language changes the name and clarifies the duties of this authority. The new name will be the Hagerstown Loan Review Authority.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
I assume, based on the comments this evening, that this will likely be brought up at another work session for fleshing out some of the concerns that were raised, or at least clarifying them. For me, I will vote in favor of introduction, but without that further conversation, would likely not vote for its ultimate approval.
Yeah, I would hope that we can put this on the agenda to discuss.
Certainly, we can revisit it. I am puzzled by the feedback that we got from the folks at HNDP, and quite frankly, I'm still trying to figure out what HNDP does and what the difference between HRA and HNDP is. So I'd be glad to have that conversation to look at whether or not, we have various boards doing the same kind of thing in Hagerstown, and whether or not that is impeding our ability to make progress as well.
Still, we had substantive testimony, so I think we should at least... I agree. Kristin.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I think when there's a money role in any of this, that those people that brought forward tonight what they had brought forth, and God knows, knowing all of this is not in my realm, okay? But I think that there was enough said tonight that it certainly does need to be looked at.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of introducing the ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Next up is the approval of a resolution, FY 2014, Community Legacy Application.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the mayor and city council adopt a resolution indicating approval of the city's fiscal year 2014 Community Legacy Application to the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. The application requests funding for two city capital projects, one, $52,900 for a renovation project at 4353 West Washington Street, and two, $50,000 for a renovation project for 170 West Washington Street.
Second.
Who seconded?
I.
Oh, I mean, motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion?
Just a, just a note, and I know we will spend all kinds of public money making me eat crow in this opposition, but, but I do not support the investment of those public funds in redeveloping the, specifically the facade, which is 43, the address of 43 Washington Street, West Washington Street, as part of this application.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, and the resolution is approved. Next up is the approval of the APFO mitigation plan for the reserve at Collegiate Acres.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move the mayor and city council approve an APFO mitigation plan for the reserve at Collegiate Acres, a project which will create 272 multi-family units on the last three parcels at Collegiate Acres. The mitigation plan is approved by the county commissioners, is to break the project in two construction phases and for the developer to pay $544,000 in an APFO to the county prior to the issuance of any building permits for the two phases. The phasing plan is for construction to begin on Parcel 3 in 2013 and construction to begin on Parcel 4 and 5 in 2015.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Yes. Go for it. Just, again, just so I can try and wrap my mind around this, what we are approving this evening is the mitigation plan, which was authorized by the Board of County Commissioners as it applies to the overcrowding that will be compacted upon, to the school system that is served by this development, or that this development serves. So, the, the solution will be the developer will pay 544,000 in an APFO, and I think the, the, the motion is actually supposed to include mitigation fee, not, not, they're not paying 544,000 in an APFO, they're paying it in a mitigation fee as it applies to the APFO. So, what occurs typically, or, or, or pre, or previous to this, is there was a $3 fee per square foot per home, you know, for each of the last four years, I believe, the Board of County Commissioners waived a certain portion of that during a building period during each, you know, construction season, but the city did not, if I understand it correctly. We didn't waive our portion. So, what will occur is the Board of County Commissioners approve this mitigation fee, comes into construction season, likelihood is of waiving that to spur development, you know, construction to occur, even though it's already been dropped from $3 down to $1. Now you waive the first 2,500 square feet, which these would apply, and all they would collect is a mitigation fee. And, and that's between the county commissioners and, and, and the development, you know, community to, to sort that portion out. But for clarity of understanding, as it applies to us, what will occur is, we'll get 28% of $1 square foot versus previously where we got 28% of $3 per square foot. And we're still going to overcrowd schools because we don't want to go to an APFO and go to our own fee structure, and on top of that, we're going to, to, to piggyback on this approval of overcrowding the schools for a fee of 544,000, which we don't have any ability to retain 28% on. I just want to make sure that, that we understand that, that, that you reduce the excise tax, you apply an APFO mitigation fee, then you get the full freight of 100% of that money in the reduced excise tax, which negatively impacts the collection that we would receive from, from that process. And I think that, that it begs the question, if the impetus in not relooking at our APFO as it applies to school overcrowding, because nobody wants to overcrowd schools, but we're going to give up that revenue stream because of this different mechanism in which it is afforded, certainly at the end of the day is to our detriment, as it applies to what we were previously able to collect as part of that development process. I just, something about that leaves us on the short end of the stick on both sides of the coin at the end of the day, where we're getting less revenue from new development through that process, and we're jumping on board the overcrowding of schools argument in continuum, so.
Any other discussion? The motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
So that's four to one. Motion carries. Next item is the approval of an after-school program for the Parkside Community Center.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for mayor and council approval of the proposed, proposal provided by the Hagerstown Housing Authority to provide for after-school programming at the Parkside Community Center located on Summons Avenue. This program was originally funded by the State of Maryland SeaSafe Grant Program, but in recent years has been funded through the city's general fund. Through this program, the Hagerstown Housing Authority provides a variety of constructive after-school activities to area youth. This program will run for the 1314 school year with a cost of $18,881 in city funding support.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire and seconded by Ms. Nye. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the approval of an after-school program at BTJ Dance Group.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the mayor and council approval of city funding to support after-school programs conducted by the Hagerstown Housing Authority. This program was originally funded under the SeaSafe Grant, but in recent years has been funded through the city's general fund. The city will provide up to $3,500 from the general fund for the BTJ Dance Group after-school program.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Nye and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item under new business is the approval of a contract to replace the roof on the market house.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move that the mayor and council approve the contract to replace the market house roof in the amount of $123,760. Staff is authorized to spend up to $130,000 to cover contingency items for this project. The contract will be awarded to BNR Roofing of Fong Grove, Pennsylvania.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I wonder if somebody could tell us when this project will start and when it's expected to end?
You know, that'll be information I'll need to get from Public Works, and I can provide it to you. I don't, I don't have a start date that I can share with you this evening.
It will be, it will be the summer or fall?
Well, I, I would say probably most likely fall, given that it's late July now.
Okay, thank you.
But it's this fiscal, it'll be this calendar year.
And, Mr. Mayor, I want to, I think I can amend my motion. Can I amend my motion, just to clarify, staff is authorized to spend up to $130,000 in total project costs, because it reads like it, they could spend that much on contingency...
Contingency items.
Total project costs, just to clarification.
Sure.
You want that $130,000?
$130,000 contingency is a bit much.
So the contingency is for the difference between $123,760 and $130,000?
Right.
Right. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the approval of the Ask Me 1540 contract.
Mr. Mayor, hereby move for the mayor and council approve a bargaining agreement between the City of Hagerstown and the American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees Local Number 1540. This agreement shall run for a period commencing on August 1, 2013, through June 30, 2016. Under the terms of this agreement, the union shall receive a cost-of-living wage adjustment totaling 2% effective August 1, 2013. The three-year contract includes a wage and benefit reopeners for years two and three. Major terms of the agreement are summarized in the tax memo.
Second.
I have a motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion?
Yeah, a couple of points, maybe I just didn't see it, but this contract approval language, at least the memo, doesn't appear to include a couple of the other items that were discussed, such as the required to work on both of normal days off, the additional days that are going to be provided for union-related activity, the comp time accrual increased from 80 hours to 120 hours, the additional time allotted for steward and president to, to settle disputes.
It says major, major at the top.
Ma- major.
Yeah, well, I mean, going from comp time accrual of 80 hours to 120 hours, I mean, isn't an insignificant item. And the other point that I would raise, and, and, you know, since we don't have these negotiations in, in any type of public setting, before the public hear, or, or the employees for that matter, it, for me, I want to make clear my concerns, the largest of which is the unknown associated with item number five, healthcare, where the language allows for an employee, after retirement, finds employment with another employer, gets on that health insurance, and then some years down the road comes back on to, to city employment, I don't, or, or, or city healthcare, I don't believe, or I don't feel that, that we have a good grasp on what that will mean in terms of cost in the out-years. I mean, I, I almost feel like it's, it's, you know, a quasi sort of OPEV issue, and I got to tell you guys, I, I, I'd like to have an understanding of, of, you know, some comfort level of what that's going to mean in the out-years. And then the last point I'll make, that I guess I can't get the question answered this evening, is one of the items is that employees at years one and two of the wage scale will advance a step, and I understand that that's, you know, to address the, the step issue, but I don't have clear understanding of whether that's going to compress the scale, and we're going to be back in here, you know, in no time at all, addressing the scale that's now compressed by making that adjustment specifically for just that portion of the steps on that scale. And, and so, so those are some of the concerns I have. Not enough to, to, to not vote in favor of this tonight, you know, having some time over the last week to, to sort of absorb it, but I think those are some of the questions, some bigger questions that we need to, you know, think about and have answers for as, as we go along.
I think we can have staff follow up with you, council member, to, to address some of the issues and try to clarify some of the points. I do want to commend the staff and the union negotiating team for coming to this agreement. I know that it's not been easy, especially in the current economic climate. There was a lot of hard work put in by both sides, and I just want to thank, thank the staff and the unions for their work on this.
I'd like to just make a statement. I really would have loved to have seen all of our unions come in together, and knowing that it wasn't a whole joint collaboration, because each union is different, but it certainly would have had a great feeling to know that everybody was on the same page. I just hope now that the other unions will be able to see some light and be able to make their decisions.
Any other discussion? We have a motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Brubaker. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and the contract is approved. And the last item under New Business is the approval of financial assistance funding for the Maryland Theater Association, Inc., for their facade project not to exceed four thousand dollars. We're waiting for you to make it, Don.
Mayor, I hereby move the mayor and city council to approve a motion authority granted to the Maryland Theater Association, Incorporated, for the scheduled facade project. This project includes exterior sign boards, upper floor decorative window painting, and painting of trim work. This grant is not to exceed four thousand dollars. Funding for this grant will be from the Economic Redevelopment Fund and from the facade and sign program as may be applicable.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The motion carries. This time, we'll have city administrator comments.
None from me this evening.
Alrighty then. I'll start on my right, Mr. Alshire.
A couple of things. The first is an email that I believe I forwarded to you guys in regard to an issue that a resident of Greenberry Hills had, one that I get to work with in my line of work on a pretty regular basis. A couple of things to note, and first is the bad. I'm not certain that the best answer we can give somebody on a Friday evening is, you know, that the issue is in ours, on an issue that clearly was in conflict with information that we conveyed in a much different manner on our own public website. And changing, you know, changing what we say on a site simply doesn't change that, and I think that this particular case accentuates an issue that could be out there, and one in which we should have a clear knowledge and understanding of, to the degree we should be able to pull up a chart and say there are X number of homes in this development, and here's who's responsible for what, you know, per some public works agreement at some time that, you know, that was approved. I know it's a big system, it's a big city, and we provide a lot, you know, of utility service well outside of our boundaries, but, you know, that's sort of the bad. The good is, as you saw from the email, and I commend Jeff, you know, with the wastewater department, and, you know, just to let him know that what she said was, you know, he was always helpful, and he needs to be thanked by the department. Ultimately, it was a small issue, and we were able to address it. And, you know, hopefully, we can not only change what we convey on the website as it applies to that specific issue, but have a better understanding of, you know, just where it applies and what developments. The second is, you know, while folks are free to come in and speak during public comment, you know, as a local government staff member myself, I don't think that it is productive for an individual staff member's name to be, you know, lamented out there in that public process. And I apologize to Ms. Kylie that, you know, that we allow that to occur. There's always more than one side to those stories, as we all quickly become aware of, but, you know, in any manner in which we can address that as a speaker gets underway, I think is good for all parties, and certainly good to show, you know, that we support of the staff. The next is I attended with Marty and the mayor the MML function last evening, you know, in Williamsport. It was a good function, and, you know, it's interesting to see the barn and the success that they're having with that public investment for events and activities. The next item is I get a lot of questions, probably more than anything else, on the MELP property, and I think one of the things we don't do real great, or haven't done real great up to this point, is providing some type of, you know, link or update on the city site that gives folks a, you know, clear sort of understanding where we're at in the process. We talk about it a lot, so I don't find most of what we're talking about as it relates to that effort to demolish that structure, you know, confidential, and I think the more we can keep the public up to date, because when you start talking to people about, you got to get a permit for, you know, discharge of water and all those things that glaze over, so I think if we can put that in some, you know, some public ease, I think that would go a long way. And the last item is I did meet with the Herald Mail editorial board last week, just to follow up on a number of issues and, you know, extend an invitation to come in, but one comment from that meeting that I would make is there appears to be some confusion, and that confusion appears to be as it relates to the Suns Project and its application to downtown. Because when I was, you know, approached with the question of, you know, do you support a stadium, you know, I've said over and over, I do, you know, under reasonable terms, under a logical location, and for the primary reason, which I thought the primary reason was for the retaining of professional minor league baseball in this community. It was remarked at that meeting, and I think it was generally agreed to under that remark from sort of that side of the table, that that's one of the lowest priorities that we should be considering building a stadium for. And the clear indication was the higher priority is for redevelopment of downtown. And I can tell you that over the last year and a half, as every other citizen has picked up that paper and read, that the primary point within just about every one of those articles and editorials is retaining professional minor league baseball in this community. If that isn't the case, and the impetus, the primary impetus here is for downtown redevelopment, then I would say to you folks the same thing I said to them, and that's, we're having two different conversations. Because I don't see them as exactly the same thing, even close to being correlated as the same thing. There are, you know, any number of other ideas that could be vetted for that very separate purpose of redevelopment of our urban core. And that brings me to, Mayor, you had asked a couple of us to, you know, serve on this lease negotiation committee, and while I would welcome the opportunity to participate in that, what I will tell you is, very frankly, if this body believes that the primary purpose for us undertaking that effort is revitalization of downtown and not for the primary purpose of retaining professional minor league baseball in this community, then you've got the wrong guy for that job, because I don't see my role in that negotiation or that committee as trying to revitalize downtown. I see it as retaining professional minor league baseball in this community.
Does it have to be either or?
I think they are completely separate issues.
I would just also comment that, you know, when you're dealing with the Herald Mail, you have to consider the source. That's all I'll say about that. The, is that it for you, Ms. Rafferty?
Yep.
Mr. Brubaker?
Tonight, I'll just be short, and I'm glad that Kristen brought up the mentioning and disparagement of staff members in the citizen comments when they don't have a chance, and we haven't had a chance, to hear the other side, and I think we need to be a bit, we need to be more civil in our comments. And so, people that heard names, and names of police officers mentioned in citizen comments should just remember that that's one side of the story. We all haven't heard the other side, and I'm sure there's a rationale for what occurred.
And we certainly don't like our staff people being referred to as Nazis. Thank you. Mr. Metzner?
Well, I agree with the last two comments, and I think we need to go a little further than that. I think in the past, if we revisit our rules of procedure, I think there are things in there now, but since we haven't had those kinds of attacks in a long time, we just haven't looked at it. But I think we need to revisit the rules of procedure. I don't think it should be allowed. If people have specific complaints about specific staff members by name, they need to make that available to us to resolve. It's a personnel issue. This is the second time I've heard one that we shouldn't spend tax money on a stadium, but we should buy the property, and we should spend tax money on the stadium that currently exists. And just so we get it straight, yeah, Mr. Physiok was offering his property for sale at a price that was exorbitant, and yes, Mr. Physiok was offering an interest rate that may have been low to him, but was higher than we could get ourselves through our own financing. So, you hear this stuff, and I appreciate Mr. Light, but unfortunately, when Mr. Light starts referring to people as Nazis here, he loses any credibility that exists whatsoever. And it should be made clear, we're going to get, find out the bottom line what happened, but there seems to be some monetary interest here, and what I know is the forum that he gave us all that he thought was laughable seems to me indicated that the structure was unsafe, found to be dangerous to life, health, property, or safety of the public or the occupants of the structure by not providing minimum safeguards, protective worn officates in the event of fire, or because such structure contains unsafe equipment or so damaged, decayed, dilapidated, structurally unsafe, or of such faulty construction or unstable foundation than partial or complete collapse is possible. Ten Elizabeth Street is condemned and unsafe. Failure to comply with the condemnation will result in fines being issued to the property. Corrections must be completed by July eighteenth, 2013, which is obviously a missed date on there, but, yeah, I didn't hear anything that it wasn't unsafe or it shouldn't be condemned, but I think we need to address that and make sure that it doesn't happen in the future.
And it could be that we, before we go into the citizen comments, we clarify notably that there's a time restriction and that they're recorded, but that we also put in those basic parameters that have been mentioned so far. And I want to thank again the staff who work on our behalf every day to maintain the public health, safety, and welfare, which is the true intent of the codes that they're trying to enforce. Is that all, Mr. Metzner?
Yes.
Mr. Munson?
Mr. Mayor, I'll be brief. Since we were in this room the last time, the city staff has been doing some good things, and even great things, on behalf of the people of the city of Hagerstown behind the scenes, and I would like to thank them for that. They know what I'm talking about, and I want them to know that I appreciate the things they do.
Thanks. Ms. Nye?
No, I really don't have any comments.
And I have no comments as well at this point. I would like to remind folks that we'll be gathering next week four P.M. for our tour of downtown to look at successes and opportunities. We're taking a field trip. Do we have an approximate amount of time that will take? Two hours? Okay.
And it's going to start at four?
We have a night out.
Okay.
Oh, we have another event, too.
Yeah, I was curious.
Right. So, we'll plan from four to six. Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you.